All right, it being six o'clock and the form being present, I'll call this meeting to order. You have in your packet here a copy of the agenda, a copy of the remarks, and the consent agenda. Anything?
Yeah, we need to add two things, resignation from Mary Ann Wheeler, our elementary interventionist, should be retiring at the end of the school year. And then I have nothing for executive session tonight, so no need for that. About the audit, I'll talk about that when we get there.
Okay, any questions concerning consent agenda items? Then, I would hear a motion to accept the consent agenda is presented.
Showed it.
Any discussion? Is there a second? All in favor?
Uh, I'm back.
All opposed? All right, then we'll go on to administrative reports, looks like they're gonna be short.
It's a sparse administrative crowd tonight, we are battling some illness with our administrative staff, so I'll go ahead and cover a couple of our administrators tonight, so we'll start with elementary. Mr. Rogers gave you the report there, and I'll do my best to fill in for him just a little bit. Celebrations at Willow Springs Elementary, they had movie night on December 2nd. A lot of good community things going on in the elementary, trying to work on that parent involvement. Erin Brower was their employee of the month for November, generosity was their word, and anybody that knows Mrs. Brower knows how generous she is with her time. I believe she won the Chamber Award for that last year, so Mrs. Brower is a huge asset to our district. They completed their dyslexia screening for kindergarten, that's a state mandated thing that we've gotta get through, and they did that. And then reading buddies started, fourth graders go to preschool, and they spend some time reading with preschool students, and I got to watch a little bit of that the other day, and that's a really cool thing to watch, fourth graders read to preschoolers, those preschool kids. I think those fourth graders are just heroes, so that's a cool program that Mrs. Larson has with the library down to preschool. Upcoming events, they have had the Christmas concert on December 6th, had a father-daughter dance on December 9th. This week, they're having guest readers in the library, I'm excited I get to do that tomorrow morning, so looking forward to that. Another second round of iReady testing, and we do iReady testing in all of our buildings, and that's the second of three to four iReady testings that students will go through, and gives a good benchmark to where students are progressing, and checking the growth, which is one of our primary indicators for student growth. And then, of course, Friday is the end of second quarter. That's the elementary report.
It's elementary, yeah.
Dr. Johnson isn't here either, but he sends his regards and our middle school report. Celebrations for the middle school, they had our teacher proud Tuesday recipient from middle school, that was Mrs. Leia, Mrs. Leia is one of our more energetic math teachers, and as far as engaging students, Mrs. Leia is very good at that. She will tutor kids anytime, I know from personal experience, she accepts emails and texts at all hours, day and night, to help kids with their maths, and Mrs. Leia very deserving of that. Students of the Month, they had four students of the month, and then they put all of those four into a drawing, and each grade level had a student, in fifth grade it was Abby Spence, sixth grade it was Garrett Rothermick, seventh grade was Allison Kilo, and eighth grade was Basili Zavala, so congratulations to those students. Second quarter bear hunt will take place December 16th for grades five through eight, not an actual bear hunt, as fun as that would be to take middle schoolers bear hunting. They do that, that's an incentive, where if you basically, if you haven't been in trouble and you've got good grades and you're showing up to school, you get to have a celebration, I think they're gonna have a, they do a movie, some popcorn, and some things like that, so. A neat thing for our kids that are taking care of business in the middle school. And then, of course, Christmas break, upcoming events, reading improvement plan, they've got a middle school math team meeting that they had on December 9th, RTI, iReady planning day on December 12th, staff breakfast, they've got a staff Christmas gathering coming up this week. And then, the big thing for middle school that I just kinda wanna make sure the board is aware of is they're gonna update their attendance policy, and this'll be a little bit different than what's in the planner currently for middle school. I put that up on the screen, just for the board to be aware that that's a bit of a change in procedures and how they do things in the middle school. Dr. Johnson really felt that attendance was, needs to be an area of emphasis in our middle school students, to try to prepare them for high school, when, you know, a lot of times that I, we've seen this on the back end, that kids get to high school and they don't understand, I've gotta be here, and if I'm not, I'm gonna lose credit for that class, and then I'm gonna be behind, and then I'm not gonna graduate, so that attendance piece really becomes important, and, you know, students in middle school don't have credits, so it's not as easy to get into that habit of being at school, so. We wanna ensure that students are present and learning, that's, you know, we all know that number one thing for student success is to be here. So, beginning in January, starting a new procedure, middle school students may not exceed five days of unexcused absences per semester, and that unexcused absence means no documentation of the absence provided, so doctors' notes, funeral notes, you know, court ordered things, there's a variety of things that could count as excused absences, but these are unexcused, they just didn't show up to school. So, if a student exceeds five of those, he or she will be excluded from extracurricular activities, so no sports, no clubs, they can return to that activity by completing tutoring to make up the hours that are missed, very similar to what we do in high school, if you're behind on credit, you go to credit recovery and get your hours back. So, consequences can be waived by administration if the absences were the result of a specific unavoidable event or a long-term illness, so clearly there's gonna be cases where these things need to be waived, but hopefully, that's an encouragement for students to be here, to show up, and to do what they need to do. Wanted the board to be aware of that attendance policy, that middle school will be starting in January. And that's the middle school report.
Any questions for elementary or middle school?
I don't know, you may have mentioned it there, but I took my daughter in there and talked with her. She, I think she helps kids that aren't even in her grade level, I mean, from top to bottom, anybody that calls her at any time, and she's super helpful.
We have high school students that still go back to Mrs. Leia to get some help, so. She's one of our many great teachers and blah blah. We do have one administrator that is here, so I'll let him present the high school report.
You can see our numbers there, we've kind of steadied out after some changes with our online stuff. One thing that we are excited about that involves you guys directly is our student representative to the Board of Education, and he is here tonight, Mr. Nolan Perkins, beginning next month, and I know you guys will visit with him about exactly what you expect from him. But I was excited, I don't know if you guys saw his application, but I was very happy with his application and some of the ideas or goals that he had for being in this position, so we're excited for him to be there, to help you guys and to help us, try to make things better for students. Things are going on, boys' basketball's off to a three-and-one start, and I think our girls are two-and-one. They had a good win against Van Geren the other night, the boys play West Plains tomorrow night at home, so that'll be a big game. Lots of things going on, our FBLA went to the nursing home today, I think maybe there was a picture in there of them playing some games with people there and doing some stuff, so. Good things there, Bear Media Productions, if you didn't catch the livestream, go back and watch it on YouTube, we had our first livestream with Nolan and Scooter Osborne doing the play-by-play, and I listened to some of it while I was at the game, they did a nice job, and they're excited about doing more of those games, so. Check it out if you haven't. The rest of this week, we're getting finals wrapped up and getting to Christmas break, that's the big thing on our schedule, I think our students are ready for a little bit of a break, I think our teachers are, sickness kind of hit us the last week, there were several days where we had a lot of subs in the building, but I think we're on the mend, I think we had one today for our teachers, so things are getting better there. That's it.
How does the tide look generally speaking?
Not bad, we did have some low days last week, but nothing to get too alarmed about today, we were sitting right at about ninety percent, which is good, that's pretty normal, and we've got some, obviously, some people out, but hopefully we can make it to Friday and give everybody a couple weeks to get better.
The Christmas event the other night was good.
Yeah, it was good.
It was good to see the number of people out, and the number of people involved in all of this.
Lots of participation from our staff and our kids, and the community really showed up, the daddy-daughter dance was the same night, and so that was kind of cool to just incorporate all of that into one night, so it's a good community.
Oh, another thing for high school, the FFA department got $5,000 grants.
Yes, I think we mentioned that before, but we got the check presented the other day, and Adam got to be in that picture, but that's pretty cool.
It was an MFA deal, so. MFA gives out a lot of stuff like that, a lot of people might worry about that.
And one more thing, and I can share this with you, I think we mentioned it last time, the FFA officers and stuff did a, had a day at Troop G, and Troop G, they wrote some isolate thanking them for that. Nolan, is there anything you'd like to say to the board tonight? Give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I haven't got to talk to any of the middle school representatives yet, so I don't have anything yet.
Great to have you here, Nolan, and I look forward to you being a part of...
I look forward to my turn.
I feel under your dress.
Sorry, I can fix that next time.
You and Marty.
That's a good look, Nolan, you're doing well, and I'll meet with Nolan after Christmas, and we'll do some onboarding, and go over some things that he needs to know, come into the board's disposition.
All right, Mrs. Kabayer, you ready for...
Ready for this, okay. Do you guys have a clicker, or I brought one just in case?
We do, but it's a little weird, so if you've got one, I'll take it. Or I can just click here for you.
This is from Mrs. Leia, of course.
Of course.
She's a super woman. Okay, so, these are a couple of representatives from our middle school student leadership, and we went more with a everyone's a leader type motto this year, instead of student council where you elect different officials, everyone had to go through the same process, and we're all kind of more of the team mindset, so they're new most of the talking.
The membership and process to join student leadership was thorough. For the application, you have to answer questions, get signatures from both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Cochran, get evaluations or recommendations from teachers, and ten student signatures. The code of conduct for student leadership is you have to have good attendance and good behavior, you have to participate, and you have to have your signature and your parent's signature. How the fifth and sixth grade representatives were chosen was the teacher teams from each grade recommended a boy and a girl from fifth and sixth grade.
And that's just an example of our code of conduct for that, they have a sign.
There are two fifth grade rats, there are two sixth grade rats, there are twelve sixth and seventh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade nervous. And here are some of the members. Morning announcements of TV kiosks in the hallways. Our morning announcements tells, our morning announcements tells us about what's going on daily. Two student leaders sign up each day to read the bulletin and sign the pledge. This month, we have partnered with the fifth and sixth grade Bear Spirits Club to stay the announcements. We have purchased one TV from each hallway. They inform students what is going to happen during the day, such as weather, date, time, weekly events, menus, and special announcements. Here's some pictures.
And so in the morning, these guys will, they've signed up, and they'll go around the hallway turning all the TVs on, and this month especially, they've been mentoring the Bear Spirits Club and doing such a great job with that, they type the number on the phone and kind of give them a little pet talk, because the fifth and sixth graders are really nervous, and so they've been great leaders.
The homecoming parade helps to celebrate the new school year and the homecoming game. We created decorations for the float, our float, and walked into parade throwing candy. Our theme was "Bear Over the Moon for the Bears" like this year.
And so we have a whole big float, we even had a bear dressed up down there, these guys made all of the stars and everything that was on the float, they stayed after school a couple days.
Community service, we do good deed around Willow Springs. We serve Thanksgiving dinner at the senior center. We also ring the bell for the Appalachian Army at different locations in town. We plan on participating in at least one form of community service each month.
Here's some pictures of the community service. They had a lot of fun ringing the bell, and I think I heard them asleep.
Every Friday, we have a, we have had day, we let people wear hats in the building for $1. We use the money earned to buy school supplies, hygiene supplies, and student rewards and things to improve our building.
The student leadership team picked up trash for the custodians. We did this job to help make their job a little easier that day. We try and do this once a month, help out, there are some pictures of what we took there.
So we just ask that the teachers set their trash out that day, and then these guys all go and collect it and take it to the dumpster, and they really have fun doing all this stuff, so it's nice.
Veteran's Santa November 11th, 2022, all of the student leaders helped with the veterans' assembly by handing out flags and cards to veterans when they stood up for their branch of military. Veteran's Weekend Week, Veteran's Weekend Week started on the last week of October, we got chalk and drew on the sidewalks to tell people to be drug-free and follow early. People were very creative and drew lots of signs showing that drugs are bad.
The Fall Social was a fundraiser for the school. We helped with concession stands, ticket stands, decorations, and live on parks. We helped with fish game, we also helped with photo booths, buttons, games, dance stage, and karaoke, we played games, food, entertainment, and began the fishing business.
At the Fall Social, we had a picture booth where people would pay to have their pictures turned into a button. We planned designing buttons to sell to students, these buttons will help our students share their school spirit and support their club or team.
So we're taking it back to the 90s, you know, buttons, and that was pretty cool, we had our photo booth, and the kids are wearing their whole pictures around, and we're, they're in the process of designing, or like we'll design a student leadership one, a basketball one, and so they can sell those in the school store, which we'll talk about a little bit.
And student food basket, the student leadership team made Thanksgiving food baskets for the community. We helped people have a good Thanksgiving there, we included turkeys, stuffing, and other camp goods.
And that was interact, which is what our program's kind of geared towards, is to build them towards becoming interact members, all about service.
During the Christmas extravaganza, we decorated our front lawn and served hot chocolate. We also had a sugar cookie decorating station in our very own Santa.
Santa had a lot of fun, our package that we got with our costume, turns out it says beard included separately, so he was a little shy, didn't wanna come out, but we talked him into it, and the kids loved it.
Hot cocoa and candy canes before Christmas break. Christmas in the middle school, Friday, December 16th. Wear pajamas, hot chocolate, candy canes at lunch. We have a movie day, we are watching Home Alone with popcorn throughout the day.
So that's what we have planned for our last day before break. So, the bear store is what I mentioned earlier, and I got this idea at the counseling conference that I went to, they get points each week for perfect attendance and no behavior referrals, these guys have figured out the loophole, even if you're not here, you could still earn five points, so everybody can earn points, right, 'cause you're not gonna get a behavior referral if you're not here, okay?
But now we have a new attendance falls.
Right, so students will learn about wants versus needs, so the wants will be more expensive than the needs, we do have the free wall outside the counselor's office, but I've noticed that a lot of kids don't have autonomy over their own items, you know, their school supplies, their hygiene supplies, all of that, so this will give them the opportunity, you know, they don't need any money, everybody has a chance to earn points, and hopefully this'll improve attendance and behavior, and they can go in and shop for those things, rather than just expect them to be free or have to find somebody to ask for them. So they'll be able to shop once a month, and this will help them learn to budget and plan ahead, because once you've shopped for that month, your time's up, so you need to plan for what you actually need. We'll post the points monthly, and we'll use lunch pins, so that way they don't have to worry about somebody being like, oh, you have this many points, and I have more. And then I have applied for a Walmart grant, there's a $5,000 grant, waiting to hear back. They will do little $250 ones with no problem usually, but the community grant is the big one that hopefully we'll get, so. And then the student leaders will run it during advisory at the end of the day, and keep track, that'll also help them, they'll keep track of points and have to do some math, and, you know, maybe Mrs. Leia can help you.
We want to thank the maintenance for all the improvements that they have helped us make.
We want to thank the teachers and administrations for allowing us in this class to participate in events and community service.
We want to thank our board for having us here tonight and letting you share what we have been up to.
Thank you.
Very good, girls, girls, before you, sit down.
Better stand for questions.
First, would you introduce yourself?
I forgot about what you guys have names.
My name's Ellen McCurry. Brenda Campbell.
Emma Spencer.
Steve Parsons.
All right, thank you. Do you guys have any questions for the middle school team here?
I just think, I mean, that was a great presentation.
Well, outstanding, I'm glad nobody asked me to do that when I was in middle school.
You guys are very impressive.
The whole leadership team has been working on the presentation during advisory, we meet every day.
So they put this together?
Yeah, they put it together.
You said there's twelve, all the other ones?
There's twelve seventh and eighth graders, and then we have two from fifth and two from sixth. Seventh grade is our biggest class to participate, we only have one eighth grader, tough to try and get them to participate, but these guys really stepped up, and they're always eager to help out, like they show up early, I never have to find them in the morning for announcements, so.
Who's our eighth grader, one of you girls in eighth grade?
No, it's Nicholas Raymond.
Okay.
Yeah, these guys are all seventh graders.
Pretty rewarding, enjoying it, responsibilities.
Good to see you stepping up and taking some leadership there, that's great.
Yeah, I like seeing your involvement in the community and all those things, doing those outreach programs and things, that's great.
Nolan, I understand, at this age, what you do for some of the older people, the happiness that you're giving them.
And I appreciate you ringing the bell.
They had fun with that.
They've been very good for the climate and culture of the middle school as well, which is, it's a fun building to walk through, and you immediately, you know, just the little things, like the TV and the pledge, and it's just a very inviting place to go into.
All right, thank you, girls.
Oh, yep, I did that, thank you.
You wanna tell us about the auditor?
Yeah, so the auditor normally comes either at the November meeting or the December meeting to go through the audit, I don't know, Mrs. Kabayer just hit my, never mind, your thing's still...
Oh, I have this one.
Yeah.
You're good, right?
Yep, we're good now, sorry, that completely threw me off. So Kenny Thomas, they've been very busy, he called today, and he sent me the audit, and I will forward that to all of you, but he said everything looked good. They always have the one finding of, we don't have enough people in our office to properly do the checks as they would recommend, but that's been that since forever. And I would, I have, most schools in our area are in that similar situation. But Andy and Jamie have done a nice job, everything is, he's given us the all-clear on our audit, so I will email copies of that for you to review, and if you have any questions, you know, feel free to shoot those out, but he didn't have any recommendations for us at this time. So there's the two-minute audit review, or maybe less than that.
I do always enjoy hearing him go over stuff, because he's...
He's got a good voice, and we go page by page.
And he makes it as clear as that stuff can be to...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of good information that happened in.
And he did say if there were things you guys wanted him to come back and address, he'd be happy to do that, so, I'll email that out tomorrow, and you guys can take a look at that.
All right, then, moving on to several policies for review.
Lots of policies, I appreciate Mac and Matt and Brent, we all sat down here for an hour or so, and went over all of our MSBA policies that were presented to us, and the majority of them were syntax-type things, where they changed a little bit of the wording, where they clarified some things, so nothing major, and then there were a few that were like, call your attorney if you wanna mess with this in any way, so those are obviously ones we're not gonna mess with, but a couple that we did wanna just kind of share with the board to kind of pull out and highlight for you, DJF policy is on purchasing, that will change the threshold that districts can spend without going out to an open bid. Previously, that was $3,500, it's now $50,000, so it's a big jump, but that's really a nice thing for us as a district to operate in a more efficient way, without having to open up a bid for a lot of the things that we don't necessarily need to go to bid for, but need to get in a timely, in a timely way, and of course, obviously, that reflects the amount of everything now has gone sky-high since whenever this previous threshold was put into policy.
Does, between like administrators and you, is there a certain amount that they spend on their own and a certain amount that has to be run through you, or is everything run through you? How does that, how's that...
They have a budget, but if it's a purchase, I'll still save it and sign off on it.
So you're basically gonna be covering every purchase that's, that goes through of any substantial...
Yeah, and, you know, we talked, that is something, when you get that board packet, feel free to flip through the ledger, and, you know, you'll see the big spending items, and if you ever have any questions about that, don't hesitate to let me know, hey, what is this? And why are we spending, you know, $12,000 on whatever this is? Food service, I mean, that's, and I know Regina's gonna be very happy to see this, because we have to do kind of a balancing act right now to make sure we don't have to go out to bid for something that we, she has to use multiple agencies for that to get the food that we need, so that'll help out with a lot of the day-to-day purchases that we need to make.
And a lot of those vendors, we don't recognize who they are.
Right.
What it's for, and so, but as Dr. Spence said, if you do have questions, give them a call, and...
Or text.
Or text.
He prefers a call.
Um, yeah, and if I don't know, I'll, I'll find out for you. But, uh, that's, uh, that's one of the ones that, that kind of jumped out. The other one was policy IF, and that's curriculum develop, development. Senate Bill 681 was a big education bill that had a lot of things attached to it. So MSBA has put out this policy to kind of take care of a lot of the things that, that became law with Senate Bill 681 and with MSEP six, which, uh, Mr. Wagner will talk to you about once he gets here. He just, he is not sick, but he's doing the Bears for Rudder Christmas, uh, toy shopping tonight. So I'm hoping that he'll, uh, he'll show up when it's his time. So I don't have to talk about MSEP. But, um, MSEP six, Missouri School Improvement Plan, some different things coming in with that. But kind of the highlights of that IF policy, District Curriculum Committee with all stakeholders. So what that does is requires that the district have a curriculum committee with community members, parents, um, teachers, students, um, basically all stakeholders. So that at a, at a macro level, you're kind of getting a, a window into what we're doing as far as curriculum. Uh, we have curriculum committees for each subject area and each grade level. But this will look at curriculum on, on a bigger scale and just an overall what we're doing. So that there, you know, we all know the political climate and I'm sure that's where a lot of that push was from that, you know, we're not trying to pull one over on the community and teach something that, that the community doesn't want taught. So that'll be a nice, um, addition to, to, uh, to what we've got going with curriculum. And then there's some new course requirements that they're, um, they're providing for us. Holocaust Education, um, that'll come in the year, uh, the 25, 26 school year. Um, I think it's a week requirement of, you know, like a history class, we'll take a week and talk about the Holocaust. Uh, so that's a, a new requirement. Computer Science, which is something, um, we already provide that option for students. Reading instruction, they're kind of, uh, getting more specific on reading instruction. And they want to ensure that schools K through five are doing evidence-based instruction. So that we've really done our research and we're providing reading instruction that has evidence-based. And then there's also an individual component for that where if students are reading below grade level, we need to come up with a plan to get them back to grade level on an individual basis. So that's part of that, um, curriculum policy as well. And then mental health awareness, which, um, I just, uh, I feel like we're really, really trying to make strides in that area with this semester. We've had a couple of speakers come in and, and the work that, uh, like Mrs. Kabater and Mrs. Siler are doing in our school. Uh, Mrs. Brower, um, are really helping with that, but that's, uh, that's something that the state wants more focus on with public schools. So you guys can feel free to add anything else that, uh, you wanted to talk about from that policy review.
The, uh, purchasing, that is all purchases, not just using federal money. Cause I, I remember that there was a, uh, included as, they need to talk about federal money also. And then the, uh, the health one, we're required to, uh, have health plans for, uh, students with epilepsy. And seizure disorders.
Which we do already, but it's now in policy that we have to. And that's something our nursing staff has done for several years.
The policy aligns with what we're already doing, basically. Um, I may have missed it, but can you explain the evidence-based, what that means exactly?
With the reading?
Yes, um, I'll try. So, reading instruction is kind of a, I mean, you open that box and there's a lot of, a lot of different philosophies and a lot of teachers with different views on how to teach reading. So this is an effort by the state to make sure that our schools are not just coming up with wild ideas on how to teach reading, but they're actually basing it on something that has gone through research and proven to be an effective way to teach.
So it's.
To teach a kindergartner, to teach a third grader.
Misreferencing the method of teaching, not.
The methodology. Yeah. And that's, um, something that I'm confident we're, we're already doing that. Um, but they're going to need, the state will now look for some evidence that we are doing that.
And there has to be evidence that it is effective.
Yes.
That that method is effective.
And then will all of our teachers, I guess essentially that method is how they will.
Yes.
Be teaching that essentially.
Yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm confident we're already doing that, but it will, it's a good way to, we need to make sure and, and look again that, that we are doing. Cause that's, I mean, you talk about important things for, for kids, you know, teaching reading is probably number one. I mean, as, as far as, if you're going to be a successful student, you need to learn to read at a, at a young age. Because, I mean, there is research that once you pass, then there's a reason it's K through five. Cause once you get into the upper middle school years, it's hard to go back and you can, but it becomes a lot harder.
I think this is going to be an, an interesting and important committee when you have students and people from the public and board members and teachers, you know, looking at that. And then it is, at, at times or in the recent past, it's been kind of a contentious issue there. So I think there could be a lot of help and, and, and kind of bringing it all together for the, for the district, but.
When does that fall into, like, kind of take into effect in the district, like the committee members?
The committee?
Yeah.
We'll look at that probably in January and, you know, Mr. Wagner and I will look at how to, how to kind of form that committee and, and what that looks like.
Okay.
Uh, but it will be helpful because there's a lot of, you know, false, um, ideas that, you know, we are a local controlled district. And we, you guys and the community has a say in what we teach and what we, uh, what we present to students. So, uh, it's a, it's a good thing that there'll be some transparency there on, on what we're teaching.
Yeah, that'll be great, I think, for the community to have some involvement and things like that to just open door policy a little bit on some of that stuff where they can see what's going on.
Sure.
And if you looked over the, uh, board self-evaluation and the super duty evaluation, there's community involvement, uh, issues in a lot of bits. So, uh, that will help address some of that. All right. Any other questions concerning policy? And you want to tell us about the blue ribbon commission?
Yeah. Um, I'm not sure if anybody's knows what that even is, but, uh, it's been a, a big push from DSE. Teacher recruitment and retention is, um, a really big issue right now in public education. Um, I'll show you just a few of the slides, but, uh, Mr. Schmidt and I and Ms. Barker all went to, uh, NIXA, um, about a month ago to listen to, uh, the department talk about their blue ribbon commission. And what they did was they, uh, they made a committee consisting of, you can see it on your screen there, but five to 10 business leaders. Um, I know the, the Hersham, the, the silver dollar city guy was part of that commission. Big time guys from St. Louis and Kansas City. They had legislators, three state board members, um, represented from the governor's staff, DSE member, a couple of educators and a school leader. So a really wide branch. And their goal was to find how can we, how can we improve the, um, improve our teachers really? Through how can we get them to, get people to want to be teachers? And then once they are teachers, how do we get them to stay in the profession? So I'm just going to pull out a few highlights from that, um, that talk that, uh, that we went to. But a couple of data points that they showed that I thought you guys might be interested in. Teacher retention, so the blue line is after three years and the orange line is after five years. So what that means is that after five years, you've only got 46.5% of teachers staying in education. So less than half of teachers that start in education will stay. And just a little over half will stay one, uh, after three years. So, you know, basically what that's saying is for every new teacher we hire, you know, every two, one of them is going to be gone after, after three years. Yeah. So that kind of shows that comparative turnover data. So, well, that's, you know, that's just how, how work goes. Well, not so much secretaries have a really high turnover. Thank you, Mandy. You're doing a really nice job there.
I'm hanging in there.
You're bucking, you're bucking the 79% trend there, but, um, Missouri teachers, 53%. And you could see childcare workers, correctional officers, police officers, um, which is a industry right now that we, or not an industry, but a, a service that we feel like there's a lot of turnover, 28%. Lawyers, 19, nurses, not, so it's, there is a problem there with, uh, with Missouri teachers and the high turnover rate.
Did they have any other, that on other states or just, just?
They just focused on, well, at least in that, in that point. Less than fully qualified by content area. This is another big problem with teacher recruitment and retention. And we've dealt with a lot of that in the last few years. But putting unqualified people into positions, because we need somebody that's certified, but we don't necessarily have a, for instance, a physics teacher. So we take somebody that's certified in something else and.
What a menace.
You're going to teach physics now. Um, so this chart shows you that, um, the FTE, FTE unqualified is the number they come up with. Basically the higher the number, the more unqualified positions are being filled. Mild to moderate cross categorical, that's special ed and that's always been a huge number. Um, we're putting a lot of teachers in our SPED departments that are not qualified to teach SPED. Elementary education, early childhood, severe development disabled. And then you've got physics, math, biology, general science and language arts. And as a, as an administrator, when you see in, uh, uh, a vacancy in one of those positions, you automatically think, uh-oh. You know, we're going to have to get creative to find somebody because it's just, those people are hard to find. The percentages, basically what that's saying is 65% of those positions in the state of Missouri are filled by uncertified people. So yeah, that's kind of alarming. Uh, elementary ed, which, you know, just, you're right. It wasn't that long ago that those were highly coveted.
Everybody wanted to be.
Positions, right. Now 44% of those teachers are not certified in elementary education. They haven't, they could have a certification, they should, but it, it's not where, where it's supposed to be. Right. So then they looked at, uh, salary comparisons. Um, Missouri is 50th in the nation in starting teacher salary.
Way to go, Missouri.
Yeah, we're, we're bringing it in. Thirty-three thousand, three, 234 is the average starting teacher pay in Missouri. That's 50th. There's the states that are around us. Uh, Arkansas is even beating us. That's just, that's shameful. We're all, we shouldn't let Arkansas beat us. But, uh, and again, those are starting teacher salaries. And then the, uh, the salary comparisons, these are the comparisons with other professions, starting salaries. Of course, nursing is, is way up there. Police officer is right at 50. Um, accountant, store manager, library director, pet groomer kind of stood out to me. That's a, I mean, that's great, but, uh, they're making more than a teacher, um, who's gone to college for four years and probably has a lot of student debt. So, and this is not, I mean, we all know that this, it's there. And that's what the commission is really trying to figure out is how we, how we change this a little bit.
Is this from Missouri as well?
This is from Missouri. Yes. So the commission came up with, you know, okay, we've got all this data. We know it's a problem. What can we do to help? Um, and a lot of it, you know, they said, at least for this round, and this commission will continue to work and keep meeting. But their first, um, action items are, are really all about money and salary and trying to get that up. So this is what they came up with. Um, the first thing was to increase the starting teacher salary. So the commission's going to recommend that the legislator amend Missouri statute to raise the starting teacher salary to at least 38,000 and to require an annual review by the Joint Committee on Education to ensure teacher salaries remain appropriate and competitive. They also recommended continued funding to support the teacher baseline salary grant program, which is what we used this year to get all of our employees up to 38,000. I would, it seems like that's going to come back next year for sure. And they would like to change it to where you don't even need a grant, that that's just the, the baseline. But that would also be a change in the formula to do that. So, um, at minimum, I, I do think that they will keep the grant around and make sure that we can start everybody at 38K.
I remember in one of our earlier board meetings that I was involved in, wasn't our, the Willow Springs, what, like our starting salary? Pretty.
It's strong. It's strong. Yeah.
Where does it compare with like the 38 that they're, we were, we had like 23, we had to.
Yeah, it wasn't very many. Um, I don't have a salary schedule.
I think it was around 33,000.
Yeah.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
And we had to like, uh, the ones who get to that, we had to have like 23.
Yeah, we, we didn't have to do nearly as much as some of our, our neighboring districts did to get it up that. And of course that was a, it's a grant, so you don't have to do it, but.
Sure.
But most schools did.
70%.
Yeah. Um, these are all, these are all like, they're immediate push, things that they want to happen. Uh, the commission recommends that the legislator prioritize an annual appropriation to fund career ladder and that the funding be approved to districts based on the income level of the community served by that district school. So, i.e. the local tax base. So right now, um, that's a, is it 60, 40, 70, 30? But they, they partially fund that, but that would be based on local tax. So a school like us with a low tax rate, they would fund more of that for us than they would for, say, a, a republic or an X or something like that.
How long are they, are they talking about helping fund this another year or?
Well, they, they would like this, I mean.
Right. I know everybody at 38, but when does their head off and we take the full responsibility?
They haven't mentioned that. Uh, and it's, you know, career ladder went away once and it could again. I think it's, we're kind of on a year-by-year basis right now until they establish something a little more permanent. Establish sustainable funding for grow your own programs. They recommend that the legislator expand on the grants to, by relief, provided by relief funds to establish sustainable state funding to grant programs to grow your own. That's a really wordy paragraph. Basically when we, we have teachers that are doing this right now. So it's a grant program where parents can become teachers. And you can apply for the grant and they will pay for your college so that you can become teachers. And we've had a lot of success with that. We've had several that are currently going through that program. And that's a really good, good thing to, uh, to get people in to the profession, uh, to pay for that schooling. So there's, so those were the immediate priorities. There are short-term priorities. Um, establish a fund to support LEAs in providing increased salaries. A state fund to pay for the increased minimum starting salary, more competitive side. And again, that's, that's changing the formula. So that would take a, that would take a lot of work on the legislative side to do that. But, um, it's good that they're, we need to be pushing forward. Increase support for teacher mental health. Recommends that this department partner with, uh, the teachers associations to provide overall mental wellness resources and support to teachers, school leaders and non-instructional staff. Tuition assistance, um, recommends that the state fully fund the urban flight and rural needs scholarship. So that, you know, if you're a teacher, you want to go back to your master's program or you want to keep bettering your education, those, those type of grants are going to provide you funds for that. If, if we have a teacher that gets a higher degree, they're going to stay in education and they're going to better themselves. So, um, those are good things that, that we can do. And then long-term priorities, salary supplements for filling high needs positions. Right now, legally, the school cannot say, well, we really need a physics teacher. So we're going to pay a bonus for a physics teacher. But this would work towards, um, those kind of, those kind of benefits and, and things like that for those high need positions and allow, um, districts to have some flexibility with that. And then also salary supplements for teachers with national award certification. That's a really high certification and really challenging to get. But it's, it's out there and if a teacher could establish that, they could have some, some extra benefits financially. So DSE would just, you know, we sat at the, at the meeting and, and the question is, okay, those are all great things. How can we help? They want to help elevate and we can all help elevate the profession to see that teachers are respected in the same way that other public servants are, um, not just financially, but just as a, as a profession. Encourage future educator, um, give time to your public schools, which you guys clearly do, and share this information with others. We just need to, to be supportive of our, of our teachers and, um, the profession at large. And we've got, I know we've got a lot of high school students right now that are, that are wanting to be teachers. school students right now that are, that are wanting to be teachers, and we wanna encourage that in any way that we can, so. Just wanna share that with you guys and give you a little snapshot of what's going on at the state level. Mr. Schmidt, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Sharing the good things, I think that's a big part of it, we get to see a lot of good things on the slideshow before, and, and trying to get that message out, because whenever there's something bad with schools, everybody knows about it, if there's something bad that's happened, everybody knows about it, but the good things, it seems like that doesn't always travel as quickly or as far, so trying to get that message out and just sharing that any time that we can.
So, that's all I have on the Blue Ribbon Commission, and just wanna make sure we're aware of that.
There's a, there's just a lot involved.
Yeah.
In this issue, one, one solution isn't gonna fit every school. And I, you know, I think, and, I don't know if I should say this, but when you start comparing salaries state by state, you, there's a, you know, there's a lot of, the benefits are not included in that, and Missouri does have a good retirement system, and so, I'm not saying that to say that we shouldn't try to increase salaries, but whenever we talk to teachers, or young teachers and people looking at going into the teacher profession, we need to remind them of that and emphasize that, because it is good, and, and, so everything that we can do to encourage teachers to stay in and elevate the position, like you said.
Yeah.
I'm married to a teacher, and you gotta broach that subject really carefully.
No, man.
That stuff's not for the.
Oh, I know.
There are some definite benefits to teaching, and we do wanna, it's a, it's an art, and it's a, you know, we've talked about, our Teacher Proud Tuesday is part of trying to elevate that position and shine a spotlight on some of our, our really talented teachers, and everybody's not cut out to be a teacher, and the ones that are, are tremendous and make difference every day in people's lives, so, just something we wanna, wanna make sure we, we're presenting it as, this is a really good option for you, and not something, oh, you're gonna be a teacher.
And also in Missouri, I mean, too, like, to Max's point, if they graduate college and go to teaching, that, that year, they're working towards retirement.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like, you gotta have some kind of window before that starts.
No, it's a, it's a good system.
I saw, and I don't know, it's been, it's been several years ago, but I remember John Belts one time at a cattle cell saying that, well, they've been paying retired for eleven more years than I taught, you know, that's been seven, eight years ago, you know, so yeah, good retirement before then else.
But then providing encouragement and support for those new teachers, which I think we do a pretty good job of, I know each school has mentors and support systems for new teachers, right, that's critical, because those first years are, are tough.
They are, you learn a lot in that first year.
Do we have, not to hark back many years ago, but I was in FTA in high school, Future Teachers of America, do we have a, a teaching or a club like that, like we have FBLA, right?
Yeah.
Future business leaders?
We've had some, we've tried a couple of times, but we don't have an active one right now, do we?
No.
But we do, like Mrs. Patton earlier this year took a group, they had a day at MSU West Plains where they had some, some teachers come in, talk about the profession, and so she took, I don't know, about ten interested students to that, and they were able to spend the day kinda learning about their career in teaching.
You know, I, I know we don't have necessarily money for whatever, you know, businesses offer to help some funding for somebody to go to college and return, they work so many years, there's probably no way we can think about doing that.
There, there are schools that do, especially after they get that bachelor's degree, there's, there are schools that will take part of their budget to fund teachers going back to school and earning higher degrees as a way to keep that teacher in the district and to better, better your teaching staff, so that's, that's an option, and I've looked at it, and that would, that would be a strain on the budget, but it's something to look at.
You're referencing after they've already got a teaching degree, you decided to become a teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
And instead of for them to?
To keep, continue.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, and I think that is, that's one of the biggest issues in education, is you're required to get all of this schooling, and your, your salary doesn't equal what it does for other professions that require that amount of schooling. So we've got multiple teachers with multiple college degrees, and it is frustrating when they look at that salary and see that they're on pace with, with people that, with professions that don't have to have that degree. So, it's, it's, it's an issue, but I'm glad to see that Desi is, is trying, and I think, you know, there is no short-term snap your fingers and get it fixed, but.
Big shit turns slowly.
Yeah, this is a, this is a step in the right direction, I think, that we're paying attention to and trying to, to get it moving in the right direction.
Not a lot happened until we have reached some pretty critical shortages.
Yeah.
And that's why, there's a lot of this on there right now.
But a lot of stuff you're talking about, increased taxes are more, a lot more money.
Yes.
And we all know how the legislator, how that works, you know, a lot of times, just like the career ladder, Adam talking about that, you know, there's no guarantee that two years from now, they say, hey, we don't have the money for that, and they take that away.
You know, I, I don't mean nothing bad about that at all, it's just, you know, you always gotta have it in your mind with the budget, you know, when's it gonna hit us?
Right, and they, you don't know, I mean, that's the kind of deal, they just, out of the blue, say, we don't have the, that's kinda how they did it before, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Budget shortfall, and they start making cuts, and that was one of the cuts they made, so, you just don't, you don't know.
You wanna do, but you gotta, you know, it's just like your own budget, you gotta, it's because it's there.
Happy that it's there, but you gotta prepare for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of the issues, I know all about that.
All right. Thank you for letting me share that.
We're gonna, you wanna talk about the evaluations now?
Yeah, kinda awkward, you need to evaluate me, my, the paper's in your, in your packet there, you also need to evaluate yourselves a little bit, so there are two evaluations, one is a board self-evaluation, you go through that, just try to be reflective and evaluate how we are doing as a board, and then there's a superintendent evaluation in there as well for you, and you need to return those to Mr. Gumm by second of January, and we'll review those at a future meeting.
I'll try to put together some reasonable summary of them.
Need some help on adding the numbers up?
Probably, yeah.
I do think.
You got the old deal that you slide the marble and win it back and forth in your day, don't you?
Yep, that's how I do it, I do it at home.
I do think that, you know, especially evaluating ourselves, you know, it's important that we take the time and put some thought into it, and, you know, we don't wanna knock ourselves over, pat ourselves on the back, we can be, we can look at it critically and see what we can improve with, it's a, it's a good activity for us.
It is.
And I do crave feedback as well, and I, constructive criticism is always good, so, don't, don't hesitate to be honest in your evaluations.
There are no bonuses involved in, you know, exceptional, for you guys, you're paying double or anything else.
Get an extra.
Yeah, that's right.
Two types of barbecues.
All right, all right, we have a board vacancy now.
We do, yes, Jeff Cunningham has resigned his position, so we have a vacancy on the board, and I've been around and around with a lot of different people and a lot of different organizations, trying to figure out, okay, what, what do we need to do about that with our current filing for the board, and now we've got a vacancy, and there's a lot of just kind of open-ended things going on, so, on the screen is your current board vacancy timeline, tonight, really the only thing we need to do is announce that there is an open vacancy on the board, we do have an open seat. Now through the twenty-seventh of December, we will continue filing for the three open terms, and that's going on at the, the central office, so once the, once that filing concludes on the twenty-seventh, then we'll be able to advertise the vacant position, so on our next meeting on January ninth, we'll approve the filing period for the board-appointed vacancy, for example, January tenth through the twentieth, somewhere in that range, we could go a little longer if you'd like to, and then February sixth, potentially, we would call a special session somewhere in that time period, the board will review applications and appoint a new member to serve in the vacated position until the next election cycle in April of twenty-twenty-four, and MSBA recommended that timeline and that series of events, so we're not crossing the three open positions with the one vacant, that there needs to be separation from that, so, that is the, the timeline that we have, and then we're also, we'll talk about the winter retreat in our next item, but that's, that's the timeline that we're looking at for our board vacancy.
Curious on the wording on our agenda here.
Okay.
It says, once the board has approved the resignation of Jeff Cunningham.
You're leaving that tonight.
Maybe that was on the consent agenda.
That was on the consent agenda?
Yeah. And the resignation to the hires.
And I wasn't sure if we needed to approve it.
I don't know that we do need to approve it, but it's, it's there.
Accepted.
Accepted.
Any questions concerning, concerning the timeline and the process of filling that open vacancy?
And that's a rough draft timeline, and we'll, we can change the dates and things, I just wanted to kinda give you an idea of how that's gonna look.
I think everybody's probably clear, but one of the issues was having the filing date starting before tonight, and the resignation was presented to us, and, and the next election, you know, and filling that. So that we don't confuse that position with the three open positions that'll be voted on in April. It just complicated the whole mess. Okay, then winter retreat.
I'd like to have a winter retreat, a time, just kind of a, a planning session, to talk about mission, vision, strategic planning, goals, just really a chance to, to get in a little deeper than we can get into a monthly board meeting, I'd like to do that on February eleventh at nine o'clock at Echo Bluff, and get off campus a little bit, and, and we'll take some time and talk about some of these things that we need to talk about in more detail.
And if we're able to fill that vacant position in a special meeting before February eleventh, or retreat, that person that fills that can, will be able to attend this?
They would attend that?
Yeah, that was the reason for the, the special session, to get it in before this, and then the board meeting would follow, following Monday, so that would give.
Would we swear to men that on the sixth of January?
Yes. And we can set these dates at the January meeting, I just wanted you to kinda check in advance and make sure that those dates were gonna work, and we can, you know, we can adjust dates and times as needed, and we'll, we'll present those in January for approval. That is Super Bowl weekend, but it is the Saturday.
Be in Echo Bluff on nine or leave at nine?
Be there, nine.
Any questions?
You gonna lead us on a hike, Mac?
Well, there's a couple of pretty good places up there to go. Just have to cross the river a couple times. All right.
Yeah.
Well.
Lookie there. Mr. Wagner's not here, no, why don't you go look out there and see if Mr. Wagner's hanging out in the parking lot or?
Take your time.
Yeah, maybe he's, missed his key or something.
Delayed anger or something.
Yeah, we'll, I can go back and talk about Blue Ribbon Commission some more now.
Did you send the text to him?
I'm going to right now.
You know, we were a Blue Ribbon school, but several years ago.
I remember that, didn't, didn't it some kind of?
That was, yeah, that was a really big deal.
Was the principal?
Mm-hmm, they still do that on a yearly basis, and maybe we'll hit that again.
You guys could've been at school then, could you?
Something, maybe eventually, Better for Better Christmas, setting up next Friday night, sixteenth, after the ballgame.
Yes.
They always need help with that.
Yeah, you wanna say that again, Adam?
Sixteenth after the ballgame, setting up for Better for Better Christmas, they always need help with that, they, that takes hour or two after the ballgame.
Which game is it?
The sixteenth, I believe.
It is, yep.
What, James' point?
The seventeenth is when they handed out.
That's Friday. About Friday to the fourth game or?
On the sixth.
On the next Friday.
We think they're about to unload at the high school.
Okay.
Oh, this Friday, isn't it?
This Friday.
This Friday.
Let me, let me pull it up, and I can, I can talk us through it.
It's a lot of carrying, you know, off trailers and.
Just a second, sorry, guys. All right, let's talk about CSIP a little bit. Remember this on your evaluation. I can turn on a dime. So, CSIP is Continuous School Improvement Plan, we have, we've always had a CSIP, and it's something that we review every few years, update it, document it, it's not used as much as it should be used, in all honesty, it's, it tends to be something that we spend a lot of time on, we make it look really good, and then we put it on a shelf and kinda forget about it, and the goal is to stop that and to get it into our daily procedures and the stuff that we do on a daily basis. The state, you heard me talk about MSEP six, Missouri School Improvement Plan, so as part of that, that's, you know, that, that's the people that accredit us, so they require us to have a continuous school improvement plan, so, we have a committee for that, Mr. Gumm is, is on that committee, and we've met a couple of times to, with the new MSEP, they put you into two different cycles, cycle one and cycle two, Willow Springs is cycle one, that means we have to go first, and we have to get on it and get it done in a pretty timely manner, so fortunately, Mr. Wagner's done a nice job of keeping that updated, and we had a pretty good working CSIP before they announced that, hey, you better get it done, so, we met a few times as teachers, school board members, you know, parent, and talked about, what do we have here, what do we need to update, and we have made those updates and made it, there's your CSIP committee, all the principals serve on that committee as well as a teacher, board member, and a parent representative, got our beliefs on there, basically it breaks down into, to different goals, and then under these goals, we have action statements of, this is what we're going to do to make sure that we achieve these goals, for instance, goal one, develop and enhance quality educational instructional programs to improve performance and enable students to meet their personal academic and career goals, that's huge, and that's, I mean, that kinda encompasses everything we're here for, and then we have objectives, action steps, start dates, the person responsible, the resources, so, there's a lot to this, I'm not gonna go through all of these with you. But the committee did a nice job of going over all of this and making sure that, uh, that we had everything in there that was needed and really trying to get things that match up with what we're already doing as far as practices. To fit, to fit these goals. So all of that is just goal one. I'm not even down to goal two yet. There's goal two, recruit, attract, develop and retain highly qualified staff to carry out the local education agency, district mission goals. So that, that's teacher retention and recruitment right there. That's one of our five pillars, the, the things that we're gonna do. So profit in this strategy number one, seeking out professional staff members that are properly certified for their teaching assignment. Goes right into what we were just talking about. So goal two continues. Through all of that. Goal three, provide and maintain appropriate instructional resources, support services, and functional safe facilities. Making sure that we put resources into our teachers' hands that they can use, making sure our campus is, um, has the, the facilities that they need to operate at their best. And then goal four, promote, facilitate, and enhance parent-student community involvement in LEA and district educational programs. That, we talked about that a lot tonight too. Our student representative definitely fills in on that as well. But all of those pieces of how do you connect with the community and how is everybody involved in this process? You know, that's one of the things we're excited about with, with Nolan is now we have a student voice, um, that can bring something to the table and we're talking about these things. And in our retreat, we can, uh, we can, you know, drill down on a couple of these too, if you'd like to, uh, to get more into it. Goal five, this is your part, govern the LEA district in an efficient and effective manner, providing leadership and representation to benefit the students, staff, and patrons of the district. So the board and superintendent will establish and apply capital project plans. The district will identify spending priorities annually. The district collects data to guide and monitor the development and implementation of the comprehensive school improvement plan. Provide visionary leadership, organizational alignment, and continuous school improvement as elected representatives of the community. So you definitely have a part in this and, um, those five goals just kind of give the, the outline of the things we're trying to do that continuously improve. We don't ever wanna be stagnant and just say, we got this, we're, we're just fine. Those are things that we wanna focus in on and, and try to tie, our, our challenge is to take this as administrators and apply it to our buildings and come up with building improvement plans and then filter that down um, to the rest of our staff. And hopefully, um, we've got a working document that we can, we can review that with, so. There's Mr. Wagner's presentation.
And ideally, uh, what would be good would be to have these goals, uh, perhaps in every board packet. Because our decisions that we make should be guided by, uh, working, you know, progress towards meeting those goals. And so having those where they're, you know, easily, uh, you know, looked at and referred back to would be, would be handy.
And we've got, um, another, the, the idea, and I'm sure some districts do it, but like all your agenda items would reference a CSIP goal and even an action item. So goal one point three or, or whatever. So we're always kind of going back to these are the, the pillars of things that we wanna be working on. We're not there yet, but that's something hopefully will, will work for us.
And we'll talk more about that at the retreat.
Any questions about the CSIP?
Uh, you might remind everybody about MSEP, about how that works.
Yeah, um, so Desi has, you know, just like we have a CSIP, they've got an MSEP for the entire state. And it's MSEP six because this is the sixth incarnation of that. And that's the way that they work towards accrediting schools. And if you don't, if we were to not terminate our CSIP or if our CSIP didn't have elements that were supposed to, we would get dinged on that and could lose our accreditation as a, as a public school in Missouri. Um, we're not, we're not hoping that happens, but that's, uh, that's what we're working towards. And the MSEP is, in our world, is a, that's a big, big thing when that comes out. There's a lot of, a lot of work that, uh, Mr. Wagner's put a lot of time and effort into this. And, uh, I think we've got a good, a good plan that we need you to approve of revisions tonight.
Any questions? And, uh, going back to, uh, committee assignments?
Yes.
We were gonna talk about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Which is not on the agenda, but kinda goes along with the CSIP here.
We do have three committees on the board. The, uh, CSIP committee is one of those. The curriculum committee will be a new committee that will need a board member on. Help me out, Mac. I've got, I had it written down and I can't.
Policy.
Policy committees, right, which met, um, this week. And is there
Well, your wellness.
The wellness committee, yes. Yeah, that would be our, our fourth committee. Um, Mr. Gum serves on the wellness committee, the policy committee, and the CSIP committee. So we need some, we need some fresh blood on some of these committees.
Couple there that, it'd be good for somebody to, uh,
Put me down for whatever.
Don't make that happen. It's classic move.
So, yeah, they get, the ones that don't make that happen get assigned. Uh, but, uh, so I enjoy the wellness committee. Uh, I like it. I get to talk about donuts and stuff.
Sorry, I'm a No, it's not, you don't know. I'm not talking about donuts. Oh, these are the donut police.
Probably a better place for me than that.
But it'd be good if somebody would, uh, fill the role in, on the CSIP and then the, uh, policy committee.
And the curriculum committee we haven't formed yet, so that'll be one that we'll be looking for a board member to, to be a part of that.
Where we need to meet.
All right, um, do you guys have any preference?
I can be on the curriculum one since it doesn't exist yet.
Taking a chance on that, you're rolling the dice?
Yeah, I can be wherever it is.
All right, we'll, uh, make those assignments and present them to you at the next board meeting.
Perfect.
Or notify you before.
Surprise.
Yeah, mercy of the judge here.
You'll get a, uh, email. Congratulations.
You have been.
Better email order.
Yeah, or, yeah, I'll text you. All right. Any comments from our guest?
Guest tweet up themselves.
Not exactly. Well, you're a guest tonight, but you, uh, yeah.
Make him official.
So that's what your goal is.
What's my goal? Um, represent the students, to, uh, give them a voice and do whatever I can to help you guys and enjoy my term here.
You might talk about some of the things on your application, kind of the goals that you, you've had.
Right. So, uh, for, one of the things on the application was talking about my concerns that I have after I left the school. Participation was one of my main ones. I was the only one that applied for the student representative, so that's a perfect example of nobody will really participates in, or there is participation, don't get me wrong. We do have a good amount of participation. But more would be good because, you know, there are students that go throughout their high school and they just, they just kind of push it out of the way, you know, just, just get me through this. I think if they were involved with the extracurricular activity, it would make their time more enjoyable.
And that's the kind of stuff we're hoping to hear from you.
And I do think the student body was cognizant of Nolan wanting this position and wanted him to have it, so that may have been a part of that, but, uh, we're excited to have you on, on board.
All right, uh, then we'll move on to Adam's question. I'd take a motion, uh, to approve the policy revisions as presented.
Go ahead.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I would take a motion, uh, to approve the CSIP revisions as presented, or were there revisions? Just what was in the
Just the, yeah, it's just been updated and revised.
Go ahead.
Is that it?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then I guess we're done.
Before you adjourn, the, the district wishes you guys a merry, merry Christmas. Thanks for, uh, your service and, uh, the time that you give up to, to help our district out. It's, it's very much appreciated and, uh, look forward to working with you in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys too. We'll be wishing you a merry Christmas before the week is over. It's still early.
Exactly.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.